Well, welcome to this evening's, uh, Daily City Recreation Meeting for October twenty-fourth, Tuesday. And for those wishing to address the Recreation Commission on any item on the agenda or under public appearance, oral communications, please complete a speaker card located at the entrance of the City Council Chambers and submit them to a staff member as early in the meeting as possible. Also, persons with disabilities who require auxiliary aids or services in attending or participating in the meeting should call the Department of Library and Recreation Services as soon as possible prior to the meeting. With that said, we had the meeting called the order and rise to pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Joseph, may I have the roll call, please?
Roll call. Commissioner Landos is not here and Commissioner Sisson is not here. Commissioner Luna?
Here.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Here.
And Chair Pastor?
Here.
Have a quorum.
Great. And we have an approval of this evening's agenda, please?
I motion to approve the agenda.
You have a second?
Third.
Okay. Those in favor approving this evening's agenda do say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the previous month's minutes, do I have an approval for those minutes, please?
I motion to approve.
Those a second?
I second.
Okay. Those in favor approving those minutes do say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Onto the director's reports.
Thank you, Chair Pastor. This is a very casual, non-binding conversation, but one I felt the need to bring to you guys. So Commissioner Luna was at our Phil-Am celebration at Marchbank Park, which I think was a unqualified success. I think it was, you know, the weather was perfect, everything flowed nicely. And it's, it turns out, it's a very attractive place to have a big community gathering. Who knew? Because we never tried this before. But now that that's out of the bag, before it was even out of the bag, when it was still in the bag, TFC, our partner in this, the Filipino channel, had expressed interest of also using the park to do some sort of community event, which I'm open to. You know, it's, it's a park, it's a good place for it, there's parking and the parking structure. But it evolved from a one day, maybe we'll have a tree lighting out there, to, oh, let's do a three day. We want to do a three day festival in December and charge people admission and have entertainment and still do the tree lighting. At that point, I thought, well, wait a minute, we don't really have a precedent for this. We don't rent our fields for community events so much as we do for baseball and soccer. So we didn't, I didn't even have a rate sheet, you know, to begin with. So there was that, because they were curious what the cost is. Talking to the staff person here who handles our insurance, that was a big concern too, because there would be an insurance requirement, but they weren't sure what it was. And they haven't gotten back, they're going to get back to me, they haven't gotten back to me yet, so I'm not quite sure what that is. And, and probably the biggest, well, two other big concerns I have. Marchbank Park, we closed the baseball field from mid-October, from October fifteenth, and usually do not open again until March, just before baseball season's starting to heat up. And the reason for that is twofold. One, it gives our parks maintenance guys a chance to rehab the field. They overseed it. It, you know, it takes pretty good wear and tear, because there's a lot of teams using that field during, during the season and throughout the summer into early fall. And it doesn't have great drainage. So that's another reason the field is closed, because once the rainy season hits, it tends to get a little bit marshy, swampy out there.
Yeah.
And our parks crew is concerned, if we have an event out there in the middle of December and we've had any measurable rain and people start tromping out there, God forbid if they start driving out there, it could cause some serious damage to the turf in the tens of thousands of dollars.
Right.
And they're concerned about that. And I share that concern, too. Another concern, and there's no, no one here from TFC, I was hoping they would show up. They want to do a tree lighting, which I think Daily City really could use a big community tree light. We have little ones scattered around the community, but this would be an opportunity, I think, for a phenomenal event, save one issue. There's really no electricity out there. There's no lights for that field. So if you walked out there about this time of night, a little bit later, it's, it's pretty dark. So, you know, the only way to accomplish that then would be bringing generators in, which I know the Bay Area Air Quality Management District frowns upon, especially we get into the winter months and it's, you know, the spur of the air days, because there's a lot of emissions generated from those. So I, I didn't say no, because I didn't feel it was my position necessarily, because I think, I like, there's a lot of good things about the event.
Yeah.
I think the time of year and the three day duration and the fact that there's no electricity out there are pretty big obstacles. I'm not saying we can't overcome them. But I wanted to hear from somebody else and your community representatives and, you know, Christina, I'm sure can get a good visuali- visualization of what the layout might be, having been out there on October fourteenth for our event. So with that, I'm hoping you guys can throw some ideas my way.
Well, I like the, the point that you, you mentioned in terms of the concern for the field conditions that may transpire if, if we do get rains.
If this weather holds up, it's probably an odd issue.
Yeah. Because I remember the days when, before Geller Park was repaired for drainage, that even the service trucks that would go out there, they went out, meaning it, they would create trenches.
Right.
Out in the outfield. And these are like six inch trenches, sometimes a foot deep, depending on where the softness of the ground is at. So, and so I hate to see that happen to a nice field like Marshbanks, especially since it's used by SI and...
SI, Westmore, UCSF, some club teams, you know, it's, it's pretty well-used.
So I hate to see anything happen along those lines. So, and then it being new, like you said, no precedence has been set to kind of like open it up to outside use for rental.
And I'll add one footnote to that, because I was racking my brain thinking, have we ever done anything like this? The closest comparison, if you remember back for the US Open and for the Swingin' Skirts Golf Tournament.
Yeah.
We did rent Westlake Park, the grassy area, for parking. And we, the fee was about twenty-five hundred dollars a day. But it was late in the spring, and, you know, it was dry.
Right.
And we had full control over, we, we had things marked for them. And we did it, I believe, three years in a row without incident.
Right.
But it wasn't in December, it was late April.
Yeah, so if it needs exploring further to find out what other locations might be available for a three day event?
They like, they like that location, because it's proximate to their office right there at DC Station. So that's the appeal.
Right, right.
Actually, tried to steer them to the roof of the parking structure, which I think would make such an awesome party space, but they didn't agree with me.
Oh, yeah. I mean, you'll get a view of the ocean from up there.
Well, I was thinking too, if you did a big community Christmas tree and had it up there, you could see it for miles.
Oh, yeah. I mean, from the traffic.
That's the thing about Marchbank Park, if you don't know it's there, it's completely hidden.
Right, it's tucked in the back. Yeah. But that's, that's my, my concern, is just the field conditions that may transpire as if, if the rains came and the event was somewhat shortly thereafter or during the drying period of that, of that turf. So, but still needs some exploring.
Okay.
Yeah.
That, that's a little bit of an issue, too, because they, they were hoping to do it two months from now, less than two months from now. I don't see the wheels of bureaucracy turning that fast. I think they're starting to get that now and maybe looking towards next year.
Right.
And the other thing, it's subject to a special events permit that's facilitated through the police department.
Right.
And, yeah, that usually takes some time to turn around, too.
Right.
Yeah.
So I was hoping to get, get a recommendation. It sounds like the recommendation is learn more before we act.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd love to find a more appropriate space in the community. It sounds awesome, I think.
Yeah, I love the idea. I love the idea of the event. I just don't know that that park is the right place that time of year.
Right, right.
It seems like dangerous, you know, for the public if it does rain. And, I mean, aside from the generators and things like that, you know, like you just never know, it's hard to predict.
Yeah.
And we, we stopped the irrigation prior to or for a week. And if you were out there early in the morning, it was still, it's wet out there. So I can imagine, you know, a December evening, just, just even if it doesn't rain, just the natural moisture in the air, condensation issues.
And I, I know, because I see by passing Geller Park that the infield's of, of some of the, the diamonds are closed off now.
Right. They're going through the same.
They're going through repairs and what have you.
Westlake, too.
Yeah, so, and so that, I'm thinking that, that, that's the same reconditioning of the field, you know, the closing off of the infield is happening at Marchbank.
Yeah, that happens at Geller, that happens at Westlake, and it also happens at Marchbank.
Yes, so I'd, I'd like to recommend that we still gather more information about this and then gather more information about other alternative sites. I know that the preference was mentioned about Marshbanks, but, you know, we do have other locations that might work as well, so.
Yeah, and I, I certainly understand the appeal.
Yeah.
You know, it's literally, if you look out back windows of TFC's offices, it overlooks the parks.
Right.
It's an ideal location for them.
Right.
And, and, you know, my other concern is the duration. I think if it was a one day, daytime a thing, daytime thing where we didn't need to bring in, you know, lights and generators, that would be one thing. But a, but a three day event in the middle of winter.
Are, are they open to going back to the one day idea?
They seem wed to the three day concept, so, you know, hopefully we can sit down and talk through it.
Was it, uh, three day events expanding on the Phil-Am Heritage Festival or another type of event?
No, no, it would be a standalone. I, I think the theme would be, you know, holiday season.
Okay.
The, the concept would be starts Friday afternoon with a tree lighting Friday night, and then continued entertainment on Saturday and Sunday. And they're also, you know, our event was free and open to the public, they want to sell tickets.
So the event part for Saturday and Sunday, it's all day or like all day in?
I, I, it sounded, I mean, they didn't give me specific hours, but it sounded like they want to do a pretty long program during the day, yes.
Um, I'd, I'd recommend that we still explore.
Okay, that's it?
Yeah. Explore the...
Is there consensus? I won't ask for a roll call, I just, I see the nodding heads, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I was, I was curious what the commission's feedback might be. See if I was heading down the right direction. The next item is the Daily City Parks Master Plan process. By show of hands, is anyone familiar with this process?
A little bit.
Okay, I just wanted to know if it hit your radar. This has been in the works for quite a while, and the city did put out a request for proposals for guidance in creating a Parks Master Plan. It's actually being spearheaded not by my department, but by the Public Works Department. They've got four or five pretty lengthy responses to that request for proposals. And we went through a similar process with the facilities assessment, the actual buildings and structures throughout the city. So this time it's, it's more parks, it's kind of state of the parks and, and best uses and, and practices and those kinds of things. Part of the process will be input, hopefully significant input from stakeholders in the community. And the group kind of behind it and Public Works, that would be really awesome if two of the Rec Commission were represented on that stakeholders group. And I, I, you've been contacted already, but...
I think we discussed it. I haven't been contacted by Public Works, other than talking with Jeff.
He didn't, he didn't invite you to?
Yeah.
Oh, maybe he waited for this form.
Yeah.
Again, I don't want to put you guys on the spot. I know you have very full lives and lots of commitments.
Definitely, I'm just...
The city did go through a similar process when the Department of Economic and Community Development created the general plan for the city. They had an oversight steering committee that had representatives from all different stakeholders in the community, probably about a fifteen person group. That group actually held together over a very long period of time. It was a very time-intensive commitment for the participants. I don't think this one will be nearly that big in scope. It's, it's focused solely on, on parks. So with that said, is there any interest among the three of you? You know, it'd be another commitment in addition to being on the Recreation Commission.
Um...
Again, I don't want to put you on the spot, but...
Yeah.
I said I would ask.
Thank you for the offer, for, for approaching the three of us up here. As far as the two who are not here to kind of like share their thoughts of their participation, can we do a phone tree on that after this meeting to see, or does it, do they need a response now, or?
I think, well, I, I certainly would like to gauge the interest of the three people here, because I would say if two of you are interested.
Okay.
We could just stop right there.
I'm interested.
You are interested?
Yes.
I'd be interested.
Okay, so if the other two thirds of you...
Yeah.
Yes, no?
I just wanted to kind of get more info about it, but, you know, if they're, if you just need to, then...
Um, you know, I was, I was hoping to find something, some documentation that would explain this process. And other, other than the actual responses, I didn't find anything great. This process for selecting the consultant who'll bring the process forward, I think is going to happen in early November.
Okay.
Recommend, well, I think there'll, there'll be a recommendation brought to the City Council. Once that's awarded, the heavy lifting part will commence. And I'm guessing it's going to be a series of, of meetings, and, you know, hopefully a larger group of stakeholders.
Yeah.
That you would be part of.
Is this relating to the, the National Fit Program that...
Not, not at all.
Okay.
Completely unrelated. This is something that's been a desire of our Public Works Director, John Fuller, for many, many years. Because, you know, the resources are so scarce in Daily City and the problems to throw money at are infinite. So I think he wanted to help. One, are we, are we doing the best things with the public spaces we have?
Right.
Can we do better? You know, are there, are there low hanging fruit, where we can make a big difference without spending a ton of money? Those kinds of things.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I, I can tell you that, I think what, what prompted this in a way, anecdotally, was Norwood, the Norwood Park Tot Lot, are you familiar with that?
Yeah.
The ceremony?
Yeah.
That was completely rehabilitated within the last two years.
Mm-hmm.
And it looks beautiful. I mean, if, if you saw the before and after, it, it's, you know, wow, you guys did a great job. That was done with a state grant. Well, after it was all done, someone there at the ribbon cutting said, you know, this is really cool, but what would have been really nice if we had a basketball court incorporated into it? Nobody asked.
Yeah.
The community. And I think there was a little guilt thinking, that makes total sense, you know, the demographics are constantly shifting.
Yeah.
Basketball is huge in Daily City, and to have a neighborhood, even if it was a half court, would have been a huge asset for some of the neighbors there.
Right.
So I think that got the ball rolling, like, you know, we really need to do a better job of engaging the community. And it's, it's tough to do it on a huge scale, but if we get a group of stakeholders that are, you know, representative of the community, it kind of validates the direction we head in.
Right. Well, you know, with just the information that you gave us, just to, to kind of like kind of bring, bring a group together to kind of like help brainstorm those ideas on how to best use the resources that we do have.
I can tell you, there's, there is a dog park constituency out there, there is a tennis playing constituency out there, there is the tactile play surface contin- there, there's a lot of groups out there.
Right.
And, you know, I don't know that we're going to be able to please all of them, but at least I think they deserve a voice in the process. And, you know, in the end, you know, we, I don't, that's my opinion. And I don't know, in your conversations, if Jeff gave you any more hint at the time commitment, the frequency of meetings, or the expected completion date, so...
Nope.
I, I wish I had that information. I don't. Again, it should be brought to the City Council to award to the successful respondent sometime in November.
Okay.
So probably in December, we would have a better idea. And I imagine it's, it's going to be a months-long, months-long process.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, I, I might be interested, so I mean, just kind of getting the...
So there's a maybe there.
The time commitment.
I will tell you what, to follow up to Chair Pastor's suggestion, since two members aren't here. You know, we do have a quorum if you want to agree that at least Commissioner Wilcox be a member, and then either Commissioner Luna or one of the other two, if, depending, we can't have, we can't have more than two, because that would constitute a quorum, our favorite word today.
I think it could be nice, too, if we even just email it to the group to see what our strengths or interests are, so that it's like a diverse group of, like you said, the tactile play or the dog park interests or whatever are sort of expertises.
Maybe even the pickleball guys, although, you know, I don't know that the pickleball guys, I don't think live in Daily City, which to me is a little bit of a problem, but they definitely have a constituency they represent.
Yeah.
Maybe someone among that constituency can be the voice of pickleball.
Yeah.
Because I know they, they've got some ambitious plans that they shared with you guys not long ago.
Yeah. So you're looking for a motion for...
I, I would be happy with that, make it semi-official.
Okay.
You know, I don't know how formal this group is going to be. And my point of reference is, when they had the steering committee for the general plan, it was actually competitive. People applied, kind of like you applied to be commissioners, and they were vetted and interviewed and, and appointed by the council, I believe. So I don't think this is going to be nearly as formal, but I don't want to misspeak. But I think a motion to, to appoint Commissioner Wilcox would be appropriate.
Okay.
And, and another motion to maybe appoint Commissioner...
This is two-part. I'd like to enter a motion to approve Andrea Wilcox as one of the participants to sit on the committee?
I, I think, to be safe, the recommendation would, to, to represent the interests of the commission to appoint.
Okay.
In that way, in case I get overruled, because I, I don't know, I don't know how much of a rule I'm going to have in this process, to be honest, but...
Okay, then let me reword that.
Yeah, that's safe. Recommendation.
Let me enter the motion to, for Andrea Wilcox as a recommendation to participate in the program that you've mentioned.
As the stakeholders group for the Daily City Parks Master Plan.
Stakeholders group. Yeah, for the master plan. And with that said, do I get a second on that?
I second the motion.
And those in favor do say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And part two, also to recommend Christina Luna to also represent the, from the commission's point, the position of...
The stakeholders group?
Stakeholders or stakeholders group.
For the Daily City Parks Master Plan.
And for the Daily City Master Plan. So with that, do I have a second for Christina?
Second.
And those in favor do say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
All right. Let's see if Commissioners Sisson or Landos or, yeah, I'll throw it out there, but I think you two would bring a lot to that group. That's it for the reports. Next item is your turn for reports, commissioners' reports.
Okay. Well, like I mentioned to Joseph before our meeting started, I, I did not have a chance to, to be present at the Daily City Phil-Am Heritage Event, but from what I saw on, on the website, the YouTube and Facebook, there was some nice event, nice performers and, and very festive atmosphere that was there. Andrea shared about her husband.
He went with my older son, yeah.
Yeah.
Good DJs and good poke.
Yeah. Visiting various booths over there as well. So congratulations to the, to the TFC and Daily City staff for, for creating that event and hopefully down the road, in the near future, we see other similar events like that coming up. So, thank you.
The person to your right was also on the, the planning...
Oh, great, sorry.
Responsible, I understand, for a fair share of the entertainment up on the stage, too.
Oh, my bad.
No, it was, it was great. You know, like, just getting some feedback from a lot of the community, people who live in Daily City and outside of it. I think it's been needed for a long time, something like this, and so people were just really happy that there was something. I think the weather worked in our favor. And it was just, the space is really nice. I mean, it's, it's a good space for it. And, but overall, like, I think I could see it growing. I think it'll attract more people over the, over time, yeah.
I'm hoping we can pin down a date for 2018.
Yeah.
There you go.
And I have to say, I mean, your team, you know, Romeo, Leslie, Karen, Chris, like, they, they work really hard, so I just, I, I...
And Karen worked really hard on it.
Yeah.
And Melissa and Pete and Ray, and, you know, there was a lot, a lot of, lot of hours waiting to prepare.
They pretty much slept there. It seemed, it sounded like, so, yeah, they did great.
Wow. As always, as always. And so that's, that's my contribution to that, this portion of the meeting. Any other thoughts from the commissioners about any events they might have attended other, along with that, this past, since the last meeting? Yep? Okay, so with that said, we have some upcoming events, and Joseph, can you kind of lighten us on that?
I can get through them real quickly. Coming up this Friday, October twenty-seventh, at Geomona Pool, our annual haunted pool event. Bit of a misnomer, the pool itself is not haunted. The classroom adjacent to the pool that, they, every year, they outdo themselves. If you've ever been, they, they transform a classroom into a really terrifying space for one day of the year. That's Friday, October twenty-seventh, from six-thirty to nine-thirty at Geomona Pool, eight dollars per person. In addition to the haunted house, there is a recreation swim in the pool. And then back at the pool on November tenth, they will have a movie night, dive-in theater kind of thing they do occasionally. As of now, they were still undecided about what that title, they, they got to make sure they get the licensing rights. As of this afternoon, there was not a clear choice of what the movie would be. Then we head into the holiday season, Break for Tots over at Pacelli Gym on December second from three to nine.
Can you clarify what that is? Sorry.
Break for tots? I don't know what it is.
It's breakdancing in 2017. It's...
But for tots?
It's like Toys for Tots, but it's break, it's like a fundraising, toy raising, breakdance event.
Okay.
And then the highlight of our holiday season... And then the highlight of our holiday season is the Frosty Fest, which, you know, we're open to suggestions for renaming that event, by the way. The Frosty Fest is Saturday, December 16th, in the Pacelli Gym, from four to six. And it's a big indoor crazy carnival for the kids. And the stage is set up, and the kids, especially the ones that participate in our after-school programs, all take turns up on the stage entertaining. And Santa Claus is there. And it's, it's absolute chaos. It's, I think, kind of more sugar-fueled than probably any other event we do. And the noise level is crazy, but people have a good time.
Yeah.
And right now, it is the closest community event we have, you know, celebrating holidays in the absence of anything. You know, we don't have a big tree lighting.
So this is kind of like, they have a form of tree, they have, add trees that then...
They do, they do a tree lighting inside the gym.
Inside, yeah.
But it's not like Rockefeller Square or anything, or Union Square, even.
Yeah.
But that's it on the radar.
All right, thank you. Thanks for clarifying that, Break for Tots. I thought these were infants.
It's been going on for a while.
Yeah, two-year-olds.
But they're...
It's like Toys for Tots.
Yeah. Okay. With that said, this brings us up to the close of this evening's meeting. Our next meeting is going to be November 28th, Tuesday, at 7:00 PM. And do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting this evening?
I motion to adjourn this meeting. I have a second.
Okay. Those in favor adjourning this evening meeting, do say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. This meeting is now adjourned.